The Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement calls this public hearing to order. It is now 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, January 26, 2016. Present with me this morning is Senator Frank B. Uggan Jr. to my right, and to my left is Senator Tina Munya Barnes. Thank you for joining me this morning. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive testimony on, one, the executive appointment of Mr. Michael A. Pangolinan to serve as a community-at-large member of the Public Utilities Commission; to hear Bill Number 210-33 introduced by Senator Frank B. Uggan, an act to rezone a lot in the municipality of Barigata, Lot 6-R1 Block 1 Track 221 in the municipality of Barigata, from agricultural to industrial; Bill Number 225-33 introduced by Senator Tina Barnes, an act to authorize Magala in Guam to exchange government-owned property in Ascenan or Dot Chalampago, reserved for the Department of Public Health and Social Services, with government-owned property in Dedido, owned by the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, for the purpose of constructing emergency housing shelters; to hear Bill Number 226-33 introduced by Senator T.R. Munya Barnes, an act to authorize the sale of approximately 258, or more or less, square meters of a bull cart trail that is adjacent to Lot 240-2-4 in the municipality of Ascen; and to hear Bill Number 227-33 introduced by Senator Tina Munya Barnes, an act to add a new section 401-45 relative to placing Track 3621 currently leased from the Chamorro Land Trust Commission under the administrative jurisdiction of the Inran Mayor's Office. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on January 19th, meeting the five-day notice, and on January 22nd, meeting the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, DOCOMO Channel 117 and GTA Channel 21. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 p.m. on Friday, February 5th, 2016. Please address testimony to Senator Thomas Ciata, chairperson, Committee on Lands. We'll start now the public hearing, and the first order of business will be on the appointment of Mr. Michael A. Pangolinan to serve as a community-at-large member of the Public Utilities Commission. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and call forward, I guess, Mr. Horeki, you want to provide testimony, and then I'll call up Mr. Pangolinan to provide testimony regarding his nomination. So I'll first start with Mr. Horeki. Before we start, I do want to just point out a couple of things. First of all, Mr. Pangolinan has completed serving now nine years on the Public Utilities Commission. I believe he started in 2008, the first appointment. He was completing the balance of a vacancy that occurred in 2008. He was reappointed in 2011, and then you are being reappointed now. So with that, Mr. Horeki, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. As legal counsel of the Public Utilities Commission, it's been my pleasure to work with Attorney Mike Pangolinan over the past number of years, and he has really served a valuable role on the commission. His legal training in particular, I think, has been very helpful to the commissioners, but particularly to me also, because he is an expert in contract review, in procurement matters. And the commission, when it reviews contracts of the utilities under its contract review function, looks at such things as compliance with procurement laws, whether the provisions of the contract adequately protect the ratepayers of Guam. I have to say, Mr. Pangolinan has been very helpful in pointing out issues arising under the contracts. As well, he has brought the same level of scrutiny to the PUC's own procurements for consultants, to make sure that we comply with the laws. He's brought up a number of points about those procurements, and just to assure that we're complying with the requirements. As I said, I felt that it's good to have another lawyer on the commission, because many of the legal issues that we approach are legal issues, and I think that Attorney Pangolinan adds that perspective that someone of the legal profession can add. He's also been very conscious about rate matters, to make sure that rates are reasonable, justified, and particularly looking at bond issuances. I know he has raised issues about the fact that the utilities ask for a lot of bonds, but sometimes those funds aren't used for a number of years. So the question sometimes arises, are those funds really necessary? We have a very good team of commissioners now on the commission. We have a full complement of seven people, and Attorney Pangolinan is definitely a strong member of that team, and I'm urging you to confirm him for his new six-year appointment, because we need him on the Public Utilities Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney Horeki. Do any of the panel have any questions? None? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'll call up Attorney Michael A. Pangolinan. And so, please, if you have any remarks you'd like to make?
Yes. Good morning, Chairman Ada, Senator Uggan, and Senator Munya Barnes. It's always an honor to appear before the Guam Legislature. I'm here this morning to request that I again be allowed to serve as a member of the Guam Public Utilities Commission. I was originally appointed, as Chairman Ada pointed out, by Governor Camacho in 2008, and this is my second nomination for reappointment. So I'm no longer the newest member on the commission, although I think I'm still the youngest member on the commission. But I know I still have a lot to learn. It really doesn't seem like it's been that many years, really, that I've been on, because I really feel like I've always got so much to learn about ratemaking and rate regulation. I hope that you'll allow me to continue to serve on the commission. Serving on the PUC is not a lot of fun, other than the fact that I get to work with such great people like Mr. Horeki, and I really enjoy my relationship with all the commissioners. But it's not surprising that it's difficult to find commissioners, people willing to serve on the commission. There's a lot of technical industry material that you have to digest, that we as laymen are not normally familiar with, and the decisions that we make as commissioners, especially the decisions on changing rates, whether we approve or disapprove, always end up upsetting some segment of the community. I know that you distinguished senators have, I know that you understand that feeling. But regardless of the unpleasantness of the position, you know, certain unpleasant aspects of it, the PUC serves an important public function, and someone has to do it. Electricity and water are basic necessities of life, and the cost that we pay for utilities has a major impact on all Guam residents and businesses. I don't have an electrical engineering background, and I'm not an expert in wastewater treatment facilities, but I am a sensible, fair-minded person, and I try to look at all sides of an issue before I make a decision. I do my best to treat utilities fairly, and at the same time protect ratepayers. As Mr. Horeki mentioned, we have a great support team at the PUC, especially our legal counsel and ALJ, Mr. Horeki. We have ALJ Joe Fidel Contra, Administrator Lou Palomo. They, all of the team, the entire team, helps to guide us in our work and to prepare us for these, for our meetings. And with the help of our supportive team, and with the help of the other commissioners, most of whom are much more experienced than I am in rate and utility policy, I promise to continue to do my best to contribute as a commissioner, especially when there are opportunities for me to apply my own educational background, which I'm always happy to do. I know that developing my technical knowledge regarding utility rates and operations is an ongoing process, and I fully intend to continue learning and developing, if you allow me to continue to serve. But whenever I'm asked by any of our island leaders to serve our community, if at all possible, I always agree to do it, and I think it's very important. And if you decide to allow me to continue to serve as a commissioner, I promise to do my best to serve you well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of observations I would like to make. I've been, we've gone back and looked at the minutes of the last six years, and took a look at basically your participation on the PUC, and I've noticed that, I guess, during that six-year period, there's been a total of 75 meetings that have been held. You were absent at 10 of those meetings, and giving, basically, your attendance rate was at around 88%, which I think is very good. But I, another observation that I made, so first of all, regarding your attendance at the PUC, I think that's, you know, that's certainly to be commended, considering that you also have, I'm sure you have a real high demand on your time with your own law practice.
Thank you.
But I, the other observation that I made that was that there was about maybe, you know, out of those 75 meetings, you've had to recuse yourself from voting on about probably four different occasions because of either your, the law firm that you're with is representing, you know, the client. So to avoid the conflict of interest, you had recused yourself on four different occasions. Now, this was over the past six-year period, and I'm sure that your law practice has probably grown, and you've probably taken on more clients. So do you anticipate that, you know, given the oversight of the PUC, that more and more you're going to have to be recusing yourself? I noticed you've recused yourself a lot from the telecommunications, when issues related to the telecommunications companies come up. And on another occasion, with GIDEA, because I guess your law firm is the general counsel to GIDEA. Do you foresee this pool of clients has grown to the point that you're going to have to be recusing yourself a lot more than you have had to in the past six years?
Thank you, Chairman Ada, for that question. That's a very good question, and it is something, you're right, that it does come up from time to time, that I have to, on the record, state that if my firm's involved with a client that has any involvement in a matter before the PUC, that I always recuse myself, not only recuse myself, but I don't have any involvement within my firm in handling that matter. That's an additional step that I do to sort of separate myself from involvement. You know, to answer your question specifically, I think most likely, it will probably not increase the incidence of my having to recuse myself. One reason is that we were no longer counsel for GIDEA as of last year. I think it was even more, over a year ago, we had terminated our engagement with GIDEA, so that, those conflicts won't arise anymore. And you're right, that the conflicts are usually in the telecom, on the telecom side, because our firm represents DOCOMO. And so from time to time, there are matters involving DOCOMO, but that's more limited. I think our, as you can, you'll see from the minutes and the agendas over the years, you know, there's less telecom activity than there are activities and agenda items for other agencies. So I think it's most likely going to stay about the same. There have, there were sometimes, sometimes when telecom becomes extra busy, when maybe there's, you know, if there's a telecom acquisition that's being contested, or if there's some kind of dispute, that's when telecom matters become more common on our agenda. And then, in times like that, you know, then there are more occasions for me to recuse myself, but that hasn't really happened recently. In fact, if you look at last year's activity, you know, there's really, it's a very small number of agenda items that we have for telecom. And I don't think, I think it's been a little while since I've had to recuse myself, and so, the answer is, it'll probably be about at the same level, but I don't anticipate it increasing.
Okay. Thank you. Now, just one final note. The term that has expired, expired on November of 2015. So I guess you're still able to participate on the commission matters for 90 days plus three legislative days, right?
That's right.
So that takes you up to about December, May. Now, I anticipate that we will report out this, the committee report on this nomination for the February session, but in the meantime, I just want to make sure that, I guess, if I'm correct, your still, your participation on the commission is still valid up until about May, right? Because the law allows for you to continue serving for 90 days plus three legislative days, and usually, one legislative day occurs every month.
Right.
Okay. So with that, do--
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Mr. Pangolinan.
Good morning, Senator.
First of all, just the customary, thank you very much for wanting to continue to extend yourself to our community, because after serving in a particular position for nine years, and with your involvement in other areas within the community, inclusive of the Guam Bar Association, I really, I appreciated that much more, that you want to continue to serve in this capacity. There's a couple of things that is down the horizon, so to speak, something that already has taken place over the course of the past four or five years, and will continue to tread, and I only say this because I have spoken to a number of stakeholders in the community, and this is a renewable energy component, and obviously, this is in reference to Guam Power Authority. What is your position with regards to the collaboration between GPA and some of these private business partners? Because what we anticipate is, I think GPA is doing a great job trying to get actively involved and build facilities to address our electrical needs. So that's, there's no question there. It's how they can collaborate with our private business partners, so that in fact, both of them can coexist. What is your opinion with regards to the long-term, let's say, five years, 10 years down the road, in terms of GPA as well as the renewable energy stakeholders?
Well, thank you, Senator, for the question. I think that it's, I agree with you that that's, that promoting and increasing the availability of renewable energy and encouraging the community to sort of rally behind that effort is a very, very important goal, and I think that that's, that all the commissioners share that view. I've been, I've felt heartened by the relationship that I've seen with GPA and the renewable energy community. There's been at times some growing pains, because it's a new, there's new technology, and our infrastructure may not be set up right now to fully accommodate all the technology. We're going through a lot of that at the moment, right now on the commission, just getting to, you know, dealing with the net metering system and trying to determine sort of what is going to be the long-term plans. You know, at this point, we have, we've had one year, we've had a year or two of building the industry to a level where, you know, we still have, I think, less than 1,000 net metering customers in Guam, but once we go over the 1,000 mark, then, you know, a new set of policies is going to have to be adopted, and so we're in the process of developing that. And at our meetings over the past six months or so, we've seen some agenda items involving net metering, and some of the renewable energy companies will be there at the meetings. There'll be, you know, a nice discussion, pretty lively discussion at the meetings about sort of the policies and how much sort of credit the renewable energy customers should get, net metering customers, on their bills for the power that they generate. And just even most recently, new technology that has been developed to make consumers' appliances and electrical devices more energy efficient has been, is out there on the markets, being installed in residences. And now the question is becoming, you know, are the smart meters, are they capable of actually properly calculating the credits that these, that these customers should get for having put energy-efficient devices in their homes, and making sure that they get the benefit of those? So those, but that's something that GPA has to adjust to, and has to adapt to the growing renewable energy sort of movement, and that we all believe that that's really a major goal of the commission, and that we've been pushing for that. And over the next five years, we just want that industry to develop as much as possible.
Well, I'm glad you, Mr. Pangolinan, you're showing some depth in terms of the discussion at the table with the CUC members, so I certainly appreciate your perspective. And I bring this up because about two years ago, there were less than 100 net metering customers, so to speak, with solar panels. I'm just referring just to the solar component. Yesterday, I was informed that that number may have already increased to 974. So we've seen a tremendous growth in the renewable energy with the private sector partners, as well as the Guam Power Authority, so that's where the collaboration and the coexistence of the two entities are certainly an issue that CUC may be faced with very, very shortly, if not already discussing it. The other issue I want to bring up is, the CUC has done a fantastic job in terms of working with GWA with regards to the military buildup. Obviously, securing $106 million, if not albeit $120-plus million for wastewater and some of the interconnecting distribution lines is very helpful, as we anticipate the military buildup. Now, is there an ongoing aggressive effort, and I don't know if this would be appropriate with CUC--
PUC.
I mean, PUC, I apologize. PUC, in terms of GPA also trying to acquire some additional support from the federal government as a result of the military buildup, because, you know, like I shared with you, Guam Water Authority has done its part, and those funds are going to be utilized in the forthcoming two years. But what about GPA?
Yeah, you know, I don't recall there being any discussion about federal funds. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about all of the improvements that they're going to be making to the power system, you know, to deal with some of the recent problems that they've had, and some of the loss of capacity, so that, you know, we just had a workshop at GPA where they, they kind of rolled out their plans to rehabilitate some of these power plants that have really sort of been mothballed over the past several years, in Dedido, in GIGO, the combustion turbine units, that they're now going to be, start to revive at a pretty reasonable cost, which is going to bring in a lot more of that sort of reserve capacity that they need. As far as federal, seeking federal funds for these projects, I don't recall that having come up before us as a, as a Public Utilities Commission. We're more of a ratemaking regulatory agency rather than, you know, on the operation side, but it's certainly something that, if there is availability of federal funds, I would feel that that should be pursued.
Well, I bring it up in our conversation only because, obviously, being able to acquire some federal assistance will sustain the rates, if not assist our ratepayers in terms of reducing the rate slightly, because the military community is our partner, so we want, we definitely want to ensure that if there's incremental impact as a result of military buildup in terms of consumption of power, that that's part of the equation. And you're absolutely right, the operational component is CCU as well as Guam Power Authority, but I was just wondering if in fact the PUC has been involved in any initial discussions as to acquiring some additional resources from our federal partners, because we can already anticipate 5,000 additional Marines and 1,300 dependents, and we are looking at additional residents, and then all the additional facilities to accommodate our Marines relocating to Guam. So that's going to require some additional throughput, so to speak, or use of our GPA and other utilities, so. But aside from that, Mr. Pangolinan, I want to, once again, close by thanking you again for offering your assistance and your support to our community, and you certainly have my support.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Senator Barnes?
Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity just to comment and saying, I'd like to thank the governor for considering the appointment again, and you taking your time to work with the PUC. I know that there are a lot of issues that have come your way, and with you, working closely with your commission members, have been at least open enough to hear the concerns that come from the residents. I've known you for, since 1995, I think, right, as my son's saxophone teacher, but more importantly, that the work that you give, the balance, I guess, and the advice that you continue to work closely with PUC. I voted you six years ago, and, Mr. Chair, for the record, I just want to say to the public that you have my support again.
Thank you so much, Senator.
You're very welcome. Sanamasi.
There are, unless you have any closing comments, I think this nomination, confirmation hearing is considered to have been completed, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senators.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is Bill Number 210-33 introduced by Senator Frank B. Uggan Jr., and I'll go ahead and, it's an act to rezone Lot Number 6-R1 Block 1, Track 221 in the municipality of Barigata, from agricultural Zone A to industrial Zone M1. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask the sponsor of the bill to make some opening remarks, and then we'll call forward those who have signed up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and first of all, thank you for having this public hearing and allowing the owners of this particular parcel of property to provide their testimony, and also Department of Land Management. This is a, an act like you alluded to, to rezone Lot Number 6-R1 Block 1 Track 221 in the municipality of Barigata, Guam, from rural agricultural Zone A to industrial Zone M1. And the owners of this parcel of property is Mr. Francisco Sanchez. And in this case, when this particular request was initially discussed in my office, we wanted to take a look at the lay of the surrounding areas and see whether in fact there were complementary zones, or if that area has been somewhat indirectly identified for M1 activity. And what we discovered was that the, there's a tendency of gravitating in that direction only because of the location of the parcel of property, and it's relatively close to not only Harmon area, but relatively close to the airport activities. And so based on that, we had introduced a legislation. I would like to ask the owner of the property to obviously provide his comments. Let me also say this, Mr. Chairman, and I know that you've worked very closely with the Department of Land Management and the Guam Land Use Commission, and in no way, by virtue of introducing this legislation, does it question their activity as well as their ongoing work in terms of rezoning properties. This is an option that was explored by the property owner, to see if by any chance they would want to go through the legislative process, and in this case, the property owner chose to go this route. So I say that with all due respect to the Guam Land Use Commission and the process that they presently have in place, and certainly look forward to some of the comments that will be provided. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I've only got Mr. Mike Borja, Director for Department of Land Management, to provide testimony. Mr. Sanchez, did you want to also?
Yes, I would. If necessary.
Did you want, did you want to give testimony?
I'm making some comments.
Okay. So I'm going to ask, go ahead, both of you to step forward then, and you can, you can go ahead, and I'm going to start with the Director of Land Management, and then you're certainly welcome to follow with your statement.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ada, Secretary Barnes, and Senator Uggan. My name is Mike Borja, the Director of the Department of Land Management. In regards to Bill Number 210-33 to zone changes by legislation, this department respects the authority of the legislature to exercise this right. respects the authority of the legislature to exercise this right. However, Title 21 of the Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 61, is very specific about the purpose of the zoning law. The law was established to protect, promote, and promote public health, safety, and general welfare of the people of this territory. In this regard, a committee of government agencies examines zone change applications. Together with mandatory meetings of the effect, in the affected municipalities, communities, communities are informed of potential changes to their neighborhood. Regarding this zone change, surrounding development trends in this particular area may offer a case to support industrial or commercial enterprise for Lot 6-R1 and surrounding lots. But I must also emphasize the delegated authority of the Guam Land Use Commission over zone changes. This viable and competent process considers all aspects of land use planning with respect to protecting the community and our island's interest. Vetting through GLUC provides a full-bodied review process embedding public notification requirements to ensure due process, particularly with respect to providing statutory public notification of its public hearings. This includes notification to the general public, particularly through issuing certified mail delivery to all property owners within a 500-foot radius of the subject lot, physical posting of an onsite sign indicating the land use request or a change of zone, and dates and venues of pertinent events relative to this request. Further, pursuant to Executive Order Number 9626, the Guam Land Use Commission has afforded the opportunity to review government agencies' comments expressed through the Application Review Committee. The ARC is made up of regulatory agencies to review requests for zone changes that are submitted to the Department of Land Management. The parameters include ensuring compliance with regulatory standards, ascertaining overall environmental, socioeconomic, and infrastructure and cultural impacts, evaluating alternative development activities, assisting other ARC member agencies in establishing a social and physical infrastructural, economic, and cultural programs, and developing and providing official position statements by the government of Guam agencies on applications that are submitted. While zone change application requests processed through the Guam Land Use Commission are vetted by a review committee discussed above and afford the public an opportunity to comment, legislative zone changes are not reviewed by the ARC and are given SCAT notice to the public. For a zone change of this magnitude, agricultural to light industrial, the matter should be permitted the scrutiny and notifications established by law. The Department of Land Management encourages private landowner development, but absolutely recommends using the processes outlined in 21GCA, Chapter 61, for this major zone change. Additionally, the general public should be afforded the established notification process for this zone change so they may have the opportunity to engage in significant changes to their neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Borha. Mr. Sanchez?
Good morning, Senator Ada, Senator Uggins, and Senator Luna Barnes. And with all due respect to the Department of Land Management and what was stated, I am not trying to circumvent, start anything new or whatever. Unfortunately, in my circumstances, I was off island and all, but right now, I had to find a way to get things going for my family and my personal needs as well. And I have this property that's available, which I am in hock to the max with. But the reason for this is because of my financial situation. My financial situation right now is very, very bad. So what it is, is that with all the things leaving and all, and coming back to a complete bad situation, not only on my finances, but my house was burnt. My, all my furniture, goods, everything safe, everything was stolen. We walked into a house after being gone and coming back into a house that was gutted. And financially, because of medical and other things that had occurred, it was very difficult for us because we had no insurance. It wasn't paid, unfortunately, by people that were supposed to take care of it. So up to this date, I have been working on my house. I can't afford to hire people, so I have to do it myself. I have to scrounge for money, I had to borrow even on that property to get money to pay off whatever's necessary. And I have to try to find a way to be able to increase the chances of me being able to gain some more monetary stability. And I found the only way I could do that is without reflecting on just my pension and social security, which isn't much, and a mortgage of $900, roughly eight some, and paying water power and all, leaves me practically null and void with no money. And when we came back, our, our vehicles, everything were all damaged, not workable. So I had to get rid of it. In other words, senators, what it is, is I had to find a means, I have to start now to try to find a means to be able to put myself into a more stable and livable situation. And we're not there yet. So I found that this property, even though it's mortgaged and all, was the one way because all around it had M1, I had people that were interested in possibly helping me to go partnership in it or something or to even build on it to, because of the location. And so what it is, is with that situation and with no money to be able to afford to do what's necessary to go through the suggested steps to GLUC and so forth, and then to be able to move on this as soon as I can to be able to put myself and my family in a better situation, I chose to come this route because I found that it gives, it did have an affordable opportunity. Now, we did have a brief discussion, you remember, Mike? That I was only looking for commercial initially. But then, as Mike suggested, that all around is M1. And so I decided to go for M1. And that made sense because the adjoining lots have been already approved for M1 and all around the area is M1. That would give me an opportunity to start something, to get things going with the lack of funds and so forth, to be able to give me an opportunity or to be able to now start something. Because right now, I mean, it's very difficult for us, you know? And I'm not ashamed to say it because of the fact that, I guess that's what God wants to happen at the time because, you know, I do his work. But the thing is, is if the Senate would give me this opportunity, because it is an avenue, it would surely put me in a better posture to be able to be, have the opportunity and available. I have people interested, I have people that, but not on an agricultural. So that's another. They did stipulate, commercial or industrial, would make them more amicable to discuss a joint venture, doing something with the property that would enhance Guam. And as I stress, all the ones around are already M1. So if these went to GLUC already, then I would say I'm in between. So what it would do is only enhance that area, do the right thing for that area, and not make any negative impact in that area. So all I'm asking is consideration because I need a break to be able to get things going. And I can't afford legal fees, I can't afford any of those other things, I just can't. You know, that's how the situation, I hate to do it publicly, but that's the situation I'm in. And that's when I, why I came through the Senate. And I respect Mike here and I respect his actual suggestion for me to go for him, on which I appreciate that he did. Because it just makes sense because the others are the same. So as I said, my situation right now, it's all on record. I've been hit several times, burglarized, the house was on fire, I have pictures here if necessary to show you. It was a bad situation coming back home. But God willing, we're back in the house and we're, we're still making do. So the consideration, all I'm asking is, is a way to be able to make it affordable so I can't, don't have to borrow anymore. I just can't because I've exhausted the means. And I am at the point right now, paying that with the minimal retirement that I have and social security, I'm just barely making it. So this would give me the opportunity, any consideration the senators would have for this, it would surely help me to get started, to get going. If I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mike, I'm sorry.
If I felt it was detrimental for that area and all, of course, then I wouldn't hesitate to be probably the first one in line to try to make it good. But because of the situation and where it's located, it only conforms to what's being done there. So I don't feel it's detrimental and it's a good way to go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. Senator Uggins, did you have any questions? Okay. Senator Barnes?
Senator Mox, tell them, Mr. Chair. I, I do want to note for the record, Mr. Borha and Mr. Sanchez, that the mayor and vice mayor of Baragota had sent in a letter of support for Bill 212-33.
Just great.
And it talked about how, I guess you became a victim of what was called spot zoning and because you guys were the rightful owners, you guys weren't here and that probably substantiates what you said earlier about you weren't here for a while.
In that area, yeah.
Yes. And that it was back since the 22nd Guam legislatures where they, I guess, worked on the properties around that area. So I guess with that being said, did Department of Land Management, were they aware that they had a hearing or because it says the municipal planning, Baragota Municipal Planning Council supported the efforts of 210, so they must have had a meeting. Is that, is that a fair statement to say?
I, I'm not sure what the Baragota Municipal Planning Council did. I'm not aware of that letter at all.
Okay. But so I guess, Mr. Chair, for the record, that, that just note that the letter was submitted. And I can understand the processes that exist today and the efforts the Department of Land Management has done to really go through the art committee and make sure that, that everything conforms and is followed through. I understand that and I also understand the situation that you, you are in. And I, I just know that one of the major steps too is to make sure that the village residents are familiar with any kind of zoning that goes in on within their villages and that, I guess that opportunity was given. So I, I guess just a note for the record, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And see what we can do to move forward on this issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Sanchez, thank you for providing your testimony. And likewise, Mike, thank you for always being present during some of these discussions. Mr. Sanchez, I understand that, you know, based on your testimony, you've fallen on hard times. I think Mr. Borha also brings up an issue. And I do recognize that the mayor and the vice mayor jointly signed the letter supporting and endorsing the rezoning. Would it be too much to ask, because your property is right adjacent to one of the major thoroughways?
Yeah.
Not the major highway, but one of the major thoroughways. Would it be too much to ask if by any chance you can erect a sign with the proposed measure? We can work on the verbiage and then I'll work with the chair, should he report this out of the committee that at least that sign be up for no less than, let's say, 20 days or 30 days? Because he's absolutely right also, from agriculture to M1, that's a significant deviation. And granted, all the surrounding properties are already M1, it's always good to, to ensure that the neighboring community understands that even inclusive of that property, that there's a proposal before the community. Would that be too much to, to ask? I mean...
No, of course not, Senator.
Then I will, I will work, Mr. Borha, albeit it's not going through the Guam Land Use Commission process, but I think that your concern about the community being aware of any proposed changes, as significant as this from agriculture to M1 is certainly, light industrial is certainly a consideration. So I will work with Mr. Sanchez and see if by any chance we can have that up at least for a minimum timeframe, designated timeframe, because I would hate to, to have people thinking that this was just recommended, albeit through the Guam Land Use Commission.
Yes.
We can work on that, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just want to point out a couple of things for the record. Just recently, Public Law 33-68 was, was passed, was enacted into law, which requires the participation of the municipal planning councils to be involved in the application process when, when something comes before the Guam Land Use Commission. And usually the planning council's input comes in the form of a resolution, which represents then actually the decision of that, I guess you could call it the policymaking body at the village level. I believe what we received basically was a letter from the mayor and the vice mayor and not necessarily from the municipal planning council. So I just wanted to point that out, make that very clear. The second thing is I've, to, to Mr. Borha, I, you know, we've, we've had a number of folks from the community come in basically asking for zone changes through the legislature. A lot of times on the, on the premise that, that the, going through the GLUC process can, can be quite burdensome financially. Can you speak to that about the financial burden?
Well, generally, when a, when an individual wants to do an upgrade to their property from agricultural up to R2, you have a summary zone change. And that process is not as restrictive as a normal process that you go through where there's signs posted and you have to pay for the, for the notifications. It's, it's announced and, and, but you know, it's not, and it's quicker too. There's, there's timeframes put on that. In the matter that we're talking about here, I just have to note that there aren't M1s surrounding this property. And also, less than a half a mile away in the foothills of Baragota Heights, we had a process going on where an individual wanted to take his property from R1 to R2 and has, has had to halt his process because of extreme resistance from the surrounding residents. And, and the Baragota mayor had to backtrack on a support as well for that once the, the residents all weighed down on, on the mayor's office concerning this. And this was someone that was going through the process because they were, they were angry about a property that was going to be changed to an R2. They wanted some certain assurances that, that a hotel wasn't going to be built on a three-quarter acre lot. Likewise, just earlier this month, we had a significant public hearing for a corporation that wanted to do a height variance for a property they've already had clearances to do some work on. It received widespread media publicity and widespread, overwhelming outcry at a public hearing that it, that was held for, for that application. And you can see how the process does work and allows residents the opportunity to express their concern over something. I don't see anybody else that's... I don't see anybody else that's here today to talk about it. And, you know, in some cases, there may not even be people that show up, and the, and the process moves along very, very smoothly. Getting back to your original question, the costs are not established by something that we are trying to make money off, they're established to, to cover the cost of doing what's required. For example, in this case, the cost of, of mailing the certified letters, that's, that's a requirement that has to be paid for. The cost of publishing the, the notices in the, in the newspaper. And then they, they also have to put up the big sign that, that gives ample notification to everyone that, that there is a, a notice to rezone, there is, and, and it posts the dates and times and places of where meetings are going to be scheduled at. Those are the kinds of things that, you know, it's set up for them, I mean, it's set by law on what has to be done, and so they're not costs that can really be ramped down so much. But if it was to go to another level, you know, using a summary zone change, then the costs are reduced significantly. And it's not intended for us to make money off of it, that's not at all the pro, the purpose of it, the purpose of this whole process to, is to ensure that the, that the process is vetted, vetted properly. Because, you know, you could move in there and have that, and then you're going to find out later on that perhaps you don't have the adequate infrastructure necessary, or you're going to be hit with, with the, with something you didn't expect, and that would be maybe not even having the, the electrical connectivity, I mean, I don't know what it would be. But yes, I did have a discussion with Mr. Sanchez. I, I did recommend to him that perhaps he should consider an M1, but on the same breath, I also told him I'm going to sit here at the public hearing and oppose it if he went through legislation. And I have to do that because it is my fiduciary responsibility and the Guam Land Use Commission's responsibility to try and oversee these kinds of major changes in zones. And, and this is a significant change. And we'll work in every way with them. You know, the law doesn't give any waivers based on financial abilities, unfortunately. And, you know, and so even if the haves have the money to do it, they face the resistance as someone who may not have the money either. And, and they have to deal with the circumstances that surround what they desire to do with their zone changes.
Now, you mentioned about summary zone change. That would, would a summary zone change process apply for requests to go from agricultural to M1?
No, just up to multi-residential.
Just up to R2, okay. Would you dare to hazard a guess as to what is the financial, what, what would be the financial impact on that landowner if he had to go, you know, paying for all these, the red, the certified letters, the sign board, I don't know what else is involved?
Well, depending on the number of people that live within a 500-foot radius of the, of the lot, you know, thinking back there, let's just guess it's, it's 50, 50 times, I think, $8 for the certified letters. So, that, that's that cost of certified letters. There's the cost of the, the signage and the cost, the cost of the advertising.
Okay, all right. All right, we're probably talking upwards of, I mean, just the advertising alone could run about 400, we're probably talking about another, so four, four, maybe another, about a thousand bucks probably. But now, the concern that I have is, first of all, you said that that particular lot that belongs to Mr. Sanchez is not necessarily surrounded by M1-zoned...
There are M1 zones in the area, not, there's one, I believe, immediately adjacent to him, but not others. There was one at the end of the road that would have asked, had asked for a, a zone change, but was denied for certain reasons and just given a variance on their existing zone, and their existing business that's sitting there. There was one immediately behind him that was asked to upgrade, and they were denied as well, whatever the reasons were, I'm not exactly sure, but those, that's the status of what happened there. And it could be, you know, I mean, if you look at the properties immediately behind this, you know, there's residences back there too. And, and so those are the things that have to be thought about, you know, for those residents too. But the whole area looks like it could be eventually evolving into a light industrial and commercial zone, because there are a number of areas in that, down that street, that, the street area that have already been, been changed. A lot of it through a spot zoning, but there was a whole, there are others that are, have been changing over time.
Okay. I, I guess the one concern that I have is, is, is to go through a legislative zoning from agricultural to M1, you know, I've, I kind of subscribe to the idea of that tipping point, where this may be that one, one zone change that just kind of topples over everything. I don't know. I do know that there was a case where someone came in and they also wanted to, to rezone from, I think, agricultural to M1, and in fact, was surrounded, the properties surrounding that property were already zoned M1, but wanted to come through here, because going through the Land Use Commission would have attracted attention to other things that should not have been there. I'm not saying that's the case there, but there's always, you know, I, 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 I think the processes have been set up to, to, to protect the community, and, but I also recognize the fact that, that, you know, some people are not as, as, as able to financially meet the burdens of, you know, complying with those, those processes. But again, I'm just, those are kind of just my opinion at this point. Senator Torres, did you have any questions? All right, thank you very much. Do you have anything that, finally, that you want to add?
Sir.
Okay.
I just want to thank the senators and Mike for coming, and, you know, I respect whatever can be done.
Okay.
I just have to do what I have to do to try, you know? And Mike will always, always be there, but, you know, I just want to thank everybody for your time, and appreciate any consideration.
Sure. And I just want to, you know, for full disclosure, I go back a long ways with Frank when I was just a teenager, and, so I know Frank, he's, you know, he's, he's not a, an unknown to me, in fact, I know him very well, so...
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, so, thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Bora, if you just...
May I give something?
Yeah.
I know.
No, it's fine. Okay. And if you want, you could probably leave some of those with the staff, and they...
Well, this is for all the senators.
Okay, all right, okay? And the staff will make sure that they get it, yeah, to the committee members, okay?
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to Bill Number 225-33. That's an act to authorize the Magallan Guan to exchange government-owned property in Asenan Ordat Chalampago Reserve for the Department of Public Health and Social Services with government-owned property in Dedido, owned, oh, yeah, owned by the Chamorro Land Trust Commission for the purpose of constructing emergency housing shelters. I'm going to go ahead and ask the sponsor to briefly explain the bill, and, and then we'll receive testimony.
Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity. As initially introduced, Bill 225 will ascertain property in the village of Dedido in exchange, in the village of Dedido in exchange for the Asenan Ordat Chalampago lot that was reserved to the Department of Public Health and Social Services, which both are owned by the, by the government of Guam, the Guam Housing Urban Renewal Authority, and I thank Mr. Duñez for being here, but also, Mr. Chair, also, I see two mayors, Senator Savars and Senator La, uh, Lu, mayor, Savars and Mayor La Han for being here this morning. Gura has secured funds for this emergency home shelter through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. They are, there, there exists today government of Guam lands in Asenan Ordat Chalampago that have been reserved for the use to the Department of Public Health and Social Services to construct facilities, including a homeless shelter. A more suitable parcel for this emergency home shelters is undeveloped lot within the inventory of land, Chamorro Land Trust, located to the, adjacent to the Northern Regional Health Center and Gura Housing in Dedido. This lot in Dedido that the stakeholders within the administration were looking at is located near the healthcare facility, there, where there is available public transportation, also grocery facilities, as well as a lot of government agencies that can manage the operation of these facilities. The intent of the bill, Mr. Chair, was to authorize the governor, the governor of Guam to exchange the land in Chalampago with the Chamorro Land Trust land in Dedido, and doing so, it would put the land in Chalampago under the Chamorro Land Trust Commission and the land in Dedido under the government of Guam for the construction of this emergency home shelters. We do know however, Mr. Chair, that your bill, 195-33, did put the, that lot in Asenan to the inventory of Chamorro Land Trust, which is awaiting the governor's approval. We are hoping that the committee, Mr. Chair, will look at this bill carefully and allow Gura to help build a homeless shelter in Dedido, even to the extent, Mr. Chair, to ask that this homeless shelter land parcel be available, if not in that adjacent area in the northern area, that Chamorro Land Trust look for an appropriate lot to, to secure this facility as, as it is much needed, it's gravely needed, to help the efforts of, of our homeless folks here in the community. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to have this bill presented, and so that our community can hear and accept public input. Senator Masi.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. I'm going to call up Mayor Savars, who has also signed up to provide testimony, and of course, Mr. Bora. I'm going to go ahead and defer to Mayor Savars to provide her testimony, and then testimony from Mr. Bora.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Melissa Savars, mayor of Dedido. I, this time, I am not in support of this, this transfer, or the, I'm support, in support of the homeless shelter being built, but not in this particular area. In this particular lot, 1 Block 7, Tract 170, the immediate area is directly behind the Guam Community Health Center, Department of Public Health, behind Kaiser Housing area, part of our village. Across the street, you have Gura 35. Across the street on West Santa Monica side, you have Weddingell Elementary School, the Halls Angels football field, the rugby, Guam Rugby Field. It's a very highly congested area, very high-traffic area, and with the residential homes, two residential homes in the immediate area adjacent to this property, I do not, you know, support that the shelter be built in this area. Within a mile from this property, north of this lot, we have a homeless shelter that's already operated by Catholic Social Services. This, I agree that we do need a shelter, I don't agree that it should be in this area. The need of a homeless shelter in our community is, is definitely a, something that we need to have. However, in this particular area, recently, there were two construction, facilities that were constructed. One is the mosquito lab, and the other is the Farmer's Co-op. And both facilities during their construction period were required to put in a pump for, because they, there's not adequate water services to the, to operate these facilities. And I know with the Farmer's Co-op, that pump, just to get the water going, give it adequate water service, that pump costs the, the Co-op $200,000 to put in, so that they have adequate water services to the facility. I'm not sure what it costs Gura to put the pump in for the mosquito lab that's still not in operation. But, you know, as far as the utilities in this area, we don't want to already stress what's, what the community. The last thing I need is for the residents to tell me, especially in the Kaiser, the neighbor, the neighboring residents, to tell us that, you know, we, our water pressure's low. There is sewer, so, you know, that's a plus, but, you know, we, Gura does have property, I remember, you know, talking to them about this, there is property up behind Gura 48, behind the Dedido Police and Fire Stations. Should they want to build a shelter, they can possibly look at those lots. I'm just asking that it not be in this immediate area that is being selected. Another thing is that, who will operate this homeless shelter? The bill indicates that it will be Department of Public Health and Social Services. Is it the government agency that will be operating this, or are they going to contract it out, similar to what the Guma San Jose has? You know, at the time when Guma San Jose was built, it was Catholic Social Services that applied for the CDBG, and of course, they had plans, they had the funding, they, you know, they continue to have fundraisings to support that operation. And of course, the community, the entire island community supports their operations as well by bringing in donations to support their everyday operations. Another thing is homelessness. I have people that are, continue to be in the parks, and we have a homeless shelter. Before we register them as a roving resident of Dedido, we require them to go to Guma San Jose to register, and many times, there's a waiting list. However, when they, when their name is up and it's time for them to get accepted, they refuse to, to go into the home. They don't want the services. We have, is there any way that we can, I mean, I want to provide the services, you know, we need to as a government, but many of the homeless that live in our parks and in our abandoned homes and the buildings that we have, or even our jungles, choose to be there because we have homeless NGOs that feed homeless in our community every day except for Saturday. Five, 5:45, the homeless start trickling in, and in front of my senior center, in the front porch, the homeless are fed by the different nonprofit, non-government organizations that come in daily. I, two days out of the week, they're fed by the super troopers out of Anderson Air Force Base. Other days, we have different faith-based organizations that come in. We provide the meals, we provide the facility so that organizations can provide the meals. But that's the reason why they're staying there, because they can come close to a place that's close by. I had a gentleman that was homeless with two young children. Of course, CPS had indicated to us that they can't do anything about homeless families, you know, unless the families want the services, then they can check in. you know, unless the families want the services, then they can check in. The homeless that we have in our communities, they choose to be out in the streets. They will, don't want the services that are provided at the shelters. We can build shelters in other villages where there are homeless that can probably take advantage of, take advantage of the services that are provided. We're finding ourselves paying for, what's it, Guam IDs and police clearances and court clearances so that we can try to wean them off the streets and at least get them into a place. But it's a choice of the individuals that are out there. The services are provided, but their choices are not in, their priorities are not in the right places. And like I mentioned earlier, I'm in favor of having a homeless shelter built, but not in this particular lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Borja?
Good morning again, senators. I'm Mike Borja from Land Management. There is a critical and urgent need to establish emergency shelters for homeless families and persons on Guam, and as a community and a government, it is our responsibility to ensure the welfare and protection of all our residents. Land held in the, in reserve for this very purpose should be used for this purpose, especially when funding is made available to construct these emergency shelters. However, the land reserved for this, this use is not viable for the intention because of the severity of its topography. Land in Dedido is available for land exchange because it meets many of the very useful functions and needs. Lot 1, Block 17, Lot Track 170, in the municipality of Dedido is best suited for this unique facility because of its proximity to public transportation, health facilities, schools, shopping, and potential employment opportunities. The location is within grasp of those in shelters to provide for their immediate needs. As we have been recently enlightened, the plurality of homeless population is made up of Tramor Guamanians. If there is a justifiable reason for using Tramor Land Trust land, this is it. But our homeless are also those who have been struck with adversity such as disaster, by disasters such as home fires or flooding. Urgently in need of a place to stay, this emergency homeless shelter would satisfy this pressing need. Likewise, the shelters could serve to hold those forced away from their homes because of oncoming storms, preventing the need to use schools as shelters over extended periods. Because Dedido is the village of our largest population, it is also the village that has to manage the most displaced residents during storm conditions. Bill number 225-33 is the necessary element to move forward in providing a suitable and practical location for emergency homeless shelter, and it's the best and highest use of the land to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borja. I notice in the audience is Mr. Mike Duennius, the director for Gura, and I guess we're looking at Gura to provide the funding for the construction of the shelter. So maybe if you could join us and maybe just enlighten the committee a little bit as to, you know, this undertaking and...
Sit next to my favorite mayor.
Hey, but I thought you lived in, I thought you lived in Tamuning?
I've been living in Dedido for the last 24 years, I think. And let me say, as a, as a resident of Dedido, I appreciate everything the mayor has done for the village. She's been very responsive. But then as a, as a director for Gura, I also respect her position on this. This is something we've discussed over the last few years about the kind of, of projects that Gura is tackling in Dedido. She'd like to see more recreational facilities and more houses and less institutional facilities. And I, I understand that. But the, the issue of homelessness is a very complex thing, and this is one of the governor's priorities. He's been discussing it and challenging all the agencies for the last three years on what are we doing to, to address the homeless people throughout the island. It's a very complex issue, and we've been talking about the kind of facilities and permanent housing that we can provide. We've been talking about how to pay for the expenses, operating expenses of the, any programs that we develop. And we've also been talking about where we would be placing these facilities. So we're trying to answer about three or four different questions at the same time. But for our purposes at Gura, the first question is, is whenever someone says, can you build this, it's where's the land and do you own it? And what's it zoned? So we, we refer to it as site control. Where is this project that you're asking Gura to build? And that's a question that we haven't been able to answer for the last two years, and this, this site was one of several sites that we explored as a, as a working group with Mr. Borja at Land Management, Martin Benaventi at Guam Housing Corporation and the Public Health. So yes, we, we are looking, I think the first, for me, the first question before we can begin to break down and solve the problem of homelessness is what resources do we have available? And the first question is what is the land that we're looking at and who owns it? And that's why we're, we're here. This bill was, is supported by the administration because unless we can answer this question first, we will, we'll not be able to formulate a more definitive plan as to how to address the needs of the homeless families on the island.
Okay, thank you. Senator, did you have any questions before, I, I've got some questions that I...
You're talking about me. Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I, I just know that as we're saying, Chair of Gura and Guam Housing, in the efforts of working together, I, I was under the assumption, but I guess not being able to talk to the mayor personally in reference to her sentiments on the issue, I, that's why I noted that if there's any other lot that could be better suited for this area and the need to utilize the grant funding that would come from HUD to work closely with us at Gura, this was the most suitable face. The stakeholders in the administration for the government had said that this would work. So again, Mike just mentioned that there were several other sites that were included, not, not including the one in order because we wanted the exchange. My question to Mr. Duennius is what other suitable sites were being looked at before this final lot was brought to the Oversight Chair?
Well, we, we looked at two other lots in Dedido, and this is a discussion I've had with Mayor Savars, who I believe dating back to December and then earlier this year, earlier this month in January. One of the other sites we were looking at was the recreational facility, recreational area in the Estomboa subdivision that is, there's an existing baseball field there now and a basketball court. The second lot that we were looking at is, or the second area we were looking at were some properties on the backside of Sagan Lenazan. I believe there are some properties there that are now under the land trust. There are some, there's still sewer. I think the utilities are nearby. It, it's part of a, I believe, the undeveloped area that was reserved for expanding Sagan Lenazan.
Mayor Savars talked about behind Gura 48, was that one of the other sites that was looked at by the...
Yeah, we don't own that, that area, I believe, is mostly ancestral where the, where the police and fire station is. Some of the planning back in the early 80s looked at that as a, for housing development much the same way that the area that is across Gura 48 now is a farmer's co-op. It was originally identified as, as a potential for a co-op back in the, in the early 80s. Some of, in the early stages, early attempts to identify unused federal government properties that could be transferred. Gura 48 is, is one of those properties that were transferred before the, the BRAC process was developed. It was transferred through, from the Department of Defense to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and they in turn transferred it to us for, to develop Gura 48 housing. But no, the, the old maps that were showing, that were developed right on the time that Gura 48 was to be transferred to Gura showed some other potential use of the surrounding areas, including the, what is now the farmer's market. That's all part of the parcel that was transferred to, to the government of Guam under the, I believe it's the Guam Land Use Plan 94 process.
Senator Torres, did you have any questions? Sure.
Mr. Borja, I'm just wondering, on the, the project that was, I mean, Mr. Duennius, the project that, that Gura has funding for, is it, is it essentially a flop house that they're going to build, emergency home shelters? Or is it something more on a, a permanent basis? And a flop house, that term is generally for those facilities where people check in for the evening and then check out by a certain point, so there's, it's not a, it's not a, it's just a, a place to flop and rest your head and then you're out by a certain time? Is that what this is, the project is intended for?
Senator, we were looking at a series of facilities or housing that we could develop. We're not looking at just once, one facility to house the homeless population. That short stay overnight, say as you referred to, that's another option that we are looking at. Again, we're also looking at what would it cost to operate it, where would the funds come from, and where would we build something like that or buy something? So we are looking at, at that as an option. We're looking at about maybe two or three different approaches to, to address the needs of the homeless. The, the area behind the Northern Community Health Center is something we were looking at is more in terms of transitional housing or permanent housing, where we were looking at building up to 20 houses that the people could live in, that we would, we would, you know, develop a program to earmark or prioritize homeless families with children.
Well, then I'm, I'm even more confused because the amount of land that is requesting, they're requesting an exchange is two acres. As we look at the property that is up in Dedido, it's 16,885 square meters, right? That translates to...
Four acres.
Four acres. So what you're, and then to you, Mr. Borja, you had, you had testified that in, in the, in your estimate or that of your, your agency, that this is the highest and best use. And I, I was just a little curious because if you, if you think about four acres in a highly, in a very densely strategically placed area in one of the most populous villages in Guam, the potential for development there is almost infinite. Four acres is a sizable amount. So what, what we're proposing to do is cut that in half and put a facility, which is unclear if, I mean, two acres, I, I can't imagine that you could, unless you go in there...
What we're really asking, Senator, is, is to use the whole four acres.
Oh, you are?
If we could. If you would allow the entire four acres to be in transfer, I mean, it doesn't have to be area for area, but to use that whole area to designate it. Now, it could be in phases or in sections of how we would like to use it, but you can designate it to any amount of land to be, for that use. If we didn't have a reserved piece of property, like we may not have if this bill is signed into law, then we'll be asking for a piece of property to be designated without having to do a transfer.
I'm just looking specifically at the bill and, and the language that's contained in the bill. You look at Section 2, the land change, exchange authorized, it does call for two acres, and that's what flagged me is...
Right.
We're, we're talking, we're asking for two acres, we're authorizing...
No, we're taking two acres, and, and we're willing, we're asking if you could authorize the whole lot, which is four acres. To, to take that part out, I mean, it's not an area for area, obviously, but to use that entire area, that entire lot in Dedido for the purpose.
Okay, I will look for that because right now I'm not spotting that in the bill. And that's, and that was my concern when you talk about highest and best use, you're chopping up a good, a good amount of property and then putting in something that is, in the mayor's testimony, perhaps not the most desired activity in that proximity. And, and so, you know, when you take all things, all three testimonies into consideration, they're not exactly jiving with each other. And that's, that's what I'm having some issues with, just trying to understand whether in fact this is the best plan for that property, whether this bill actually suits the, the... It may suit the needs in, in one point of view, but when you consider another point of view, it, it really is probably detrimental to the, the areas around it, so...
Well, the, one of the reasons, we, what was a factor in looking for a lot of the, for properties around the area was the ability to, for the folks to be self-sufficient on their own, for them to be able to, if they didn't have public, or didn't have their own transportation, to access public transportation, for them to be able to, to be self-sufficient in the need to go to, let's say, get the kids to school if they were temporarily homeless, or to have groceries, the ability to get groceries, or even healthcare. And that served a lot of those needs right in that, in that one specific area in Dedido. Now, you know, we are definitely still open and looking at any other possibilities in the area, and there's, there's a, there are other places not, you know, in the immediate area. Lada, for example, is an example, is a, is, there's a big lot of land down there. Whole tracts of land along Santa Monica heading towards the Sengsong Road are all Tramor Land Trust as well. And, and so those kinds of properties can be definitely looked at as possible alternatives if this is not a, found to be, you know, suitable, like the mayor would prefer not to be. We're open if we could be in the, adjust and amend the language of the, of the bill to adjust to another piece of property elsewhere.
I think what would, would certainly help from the, from, from my point of view, if, if Gura were a little more clear about what exactly we're looking at, because a, an emergency home shelter could mean very different things. It, it almost seems very temporary. I mean, temporary to the point of being a place to rest your head at night, a, a flop house. And that would tie into a lot of what she describes as the, the usual activity in the village, where people are being fed, and as a result, they meander in the area so that they don't have to go very far for their next meal. That happens as well in Agania, and we see that with, you know, the, the concentration of, of homeless people in our parks areas here because of the vicinity to the, the soup kitchen. And, and, you know, you clearly pointed that out, Mayor, in your description of what transpires on a day-to-day basis. Now, an emergency homeless shelter from, from the perspective of, of, of the Tramor Land Trust Commission, Mr. Borja, has a whole different type of scenario. That's a little more, you know, semi-permanent type of arrangement. So I think what we need to do is first understand what it is that we're trying to build, and then the land in the vicinity, the location will, will drive, will drive, you know, our ultimate decision, because right now there's just, it's like I, I can see this being very different things, but it's hard for me to, to really visualize the business of the project.
Well, in the case of Gura, I may add, Senator, I mean, he's, he's limited on how he can spend his money, on the type of facilities we can build. So obviously, there may be places that he has to, he can only spend money on something that's permanent, a very permanent structure. So those are the kinds of things where maybe those will be the temporary facilities for, for folks who have been displaced by a disaster of some kind, and then they can move on later on. The other temporary stay overnight kinds of places, that's another idea that we're also looking at, for, for people to have a shelter to put, you know, cover their head in the evening so that they're protected from whatever the, the bad elements of the weather might be for that period of time, or they need to go undercover. So, but there are different kinds of facilities, different kinds of monies that we can use. We just need a place to, to begin to build this. And then obviously, the, one of the reasons we are looking in that area too is who would operate all these places? What, what government agency is, can be, can do this? Or maybe do we have to go through a, an NGO? We don't have the complete answer just yet, but we have some ideas of how we can approach this. But first, we have to just tackle the basic first. Where are we going to put this place? And, and we already have answered really the preliminary question... And we already have answered really the preliminary question, do we need to? And the answer is absolutely yes. And we have, we have to. You know, it's just one of those things we have to do and find the proper place to do it so that it's suitable to their needs as well as the needs of the community. And of course, we take into heart everything that Mayor Savores has to say, or any mayor. I mean, one of the things I did was I submitted my testimony to the mayor as well, so she understood where I was coming from in this whole process. And, you know, I enjoy having the conversations with our mayors to enlighten them on what's going on with their neighborhoods, if I believe that there's a need for them to understand it as well, because we're all partners in this whole thing. I can get through, I mean, we have to work together. But that's what we're trying to find, is a place to put some, put these facilities and to have different types of facilities, but the funding may come from different sources. Gora may be just one of those sources, but there may be other sources, we may, other funding sources that we're trying to identify right now.
Okay, and I stand corrected, I actually see that you're exchanging two acres for the four acres.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I was, I just, I didn't read it in its entirety.
And if the bill is passed into public law, then obviously that two-acre reserve will no longer exist, it becomes moot.
Right.
So it is just going to be a designation of a piece of property somewhere to be used for this facility.
And Senator, excuse me, let me repeat again, our priority is to address the needs of homeless families with children. And one of the uses of those four acres we were looking at is, would fit in with the surrounding residential areas on the backside of the Northern Area Community Health Center? So we were looking at up to 20, being able to develop up to 20 dwelling units for families with children.
Did you have an amount already that's been authorized?
No, at this point, what we are looking at is looking at either reprogramming or designating one of the future cycles of the Community Development Block grant fund to fund this project.
Okay, because Section 1 on the legislating fines and intents, it states that Gora has secured funding for this project through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and I was wondering whether in fact there was a price to that funding that you've secured?
At this point, we're looking at about $700,000. We're looking at reprogramming monies that were earmarked for the Gigo gym, the hardening of the Gigo gym, so that it can serve as a Tier 2 shelter after a storm has passed through. So it's not a primary shelter for families during a storm, it's after the storm. We're looking at reprogramming that for this purpose. We will, we're still looking at proceeding with the other shelter, Tier 2 shelter, which is the Estumbo Gym. So that's what, that's one of our options, is to reprogram that or to earmark it or to slot it in for the next grant cycle.
Okay, that gives me a better sense of...
There is some flexibility. Again, it's really, we can't really have a discussion until we know where the property, what properties are going to be made available at this point. It's related to Bill 227. Mayor, the mayor of Inarahan asked if we can build a basketball, a gym for them. We're basically saying the property, you don't have adequate site control for the property you've identified.
Thank you, I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. I've got some questions. First of all, maybe Mr. Borja, if you can, if you can just clarify your statement here in the third paragraph of your testimony. You indicated, "The plurality of the homeless population is made up of Chamorro Guamanians. If there is a justifiable reason for using Chamorro Land Trust land, this is it." Can you maybe clarify that?
I encounter numerous people who believe that the land shouldn't be used for anything else but for Chamoros. And, you know, we've got people out there too who need it. In a recent commission hearing, I actually had a young University of Guam student even come forward and in a rap-style poem, in her testimony, told us the same thing. I even asked her if she could come here because it was very, very enlightening. You know, "Use the lands for things that are important for the people of Guam, even if it means using it for the homeless, regardless of who they are." But my point here is that, you know, we're seeing in the media, and we're pointing it out, most of our own people in the group are, you know, the group of homeless is made up a lot of people who are of our own island. So, you know, we need to also support them. But it does, but we're not being exclusive about it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because although I too recognize the fact that a large number of the homeless that have been counted are Chamoros, you know, to state that this is a justifiable reason for using Chamorro Land Trust, I'm not sure I agree with that. And if we're going to use Gora money for this facility, I don't think, you know, we...
We're not, no.
I mean, it's faceless.
It's faceless, correct.
Either homeless or not, regardless of whether they're Chamorro or not. In listening to Mr. Duñez, that we're really not quite sure what this, what this emergency shelter is going to be like, possibly put in 20, 20 units or whatever, I can see where it would make the mayor even more uncomfortable because we don't really have a clear idea of what it is that's going to be in there, much less in an area that's already, you know, quite, quite dense. In fact, yesterday I drove around that area, and it seems that, or if there's anything that that area needs, it's probably some green space for the people to go in. Now, you indicated that this project is going to need about four acres. I mean, is that pretty much what's going to be needed? So that, then it just makes the, makes it easier then for the sponsor and the Chamorro Land Trust to go and take a look at where else can we carve out, you know, four acres or, or is three needed or what? Is it four because that's what's there?
We were, oh, sorry. We were looking at ways to accommodate up to 20 dwelling units that would be used for, I guess, as I said before, prioritize homeless families with children, so that we could have them more in a stable environment and to work towards enhancing their self-sufficiency so that eventually they can then go and rent in the housing market on their own, or with, say, a Section 8 voucher if they had one.
Okay, so then to my question directly, what does the project envision? How much land it will need? Four acres? Six?
We were, we were focusing basically on what was the potential that we could build on that particular site. And I believe our discussions, we were looking at 20.
20 homes?
Yeah, 20 dwelling units.
20 dwelling units? Okay, so...
They could be 10 to 12 separate structures.
I understand, but I'm just, because the bill basically is saying, we want to, we want to take four acres of Chamorro Land Trust property for this project. And I think we need to separate this thing about, you know, exchanging the land in Ascena and for this. I think the two are mutually exclusive, and the project should not be contingent upon the availability of land somewhere to be exchanged, you know, as a, kind of, as an offset. If the project is needed, it's needed, and let's resource it. So I think to remove the, to make it less confounding, we need to separate the two. Secondly, I just want to make sure for the record that the four acres that's being asked for is because that is what is there in that particular lot? Or does the project as really envisioned, you know, for 20 units, 20 separate flat units, is going to require more than four acres than, or will, can be comfortably accommodated in a four-acre lot? Then that's probably what Chamorro Land Trust should look for.
Now, we are also looking at other options and design options, and we're looking at things like rowhouse-style housing, which would require less land. The, what we were looking at there was just to try and preserve the residential characteristic of the neighborhood, as opposed to developing an institutional-like structures.
Maybe part of my ambivalence about this project is because it seems to keep changing as the more we talk about it. You know, just now you made the statement that it's going to be a homeless shelter for families with children. Earlier, it was a homeless shelter for the homeless. So I get a little uncomfortable because I'm just not sure what it is that we're going to put in there, and I'm sure that that makes the mayor even more uncomfortable because it's in her neighborhood.
I understand. Our discussions have always been twofold. One is to address the needs of homeless individuals who are not accompanied by children, and then also looking at the needs of homeless families with children. And in this particular area, we were looking at working with homeless families with children. There's an elementary school and a middle school nearby. The services that are available at the Northern Area Community Health Center is ideal for families with children. There's the maternal and child healthcare program. There's the clinic itself up there. And as Mr. Borja's mentioned before in our previous meetings, it's an area that can be served by mass transit. And it's an area where they can, it's within walk, easy walking distance of the farmer's market and flea market on the weekends. So that's why we thought it was an ideal spot for developing something for families with children, for homeless...
Homeless families with children.
Homeless families with children.
That's correct. And I think, you know, the more we talk about it, it kind of like narrows it further down.
Yes.
Mr. Borja, you're aware of, I guess, on Isang Song Road, north of that, there's that area, I think, called La Familia Store, and there, I believe, is a 70-acre lot that was reserved for, by the government, for land exchanges. Is that an area that might be suitable for this project? Are you familiar with that area, Mr. Duñez?
Yes, yes, if you go further, it...
It's a little out of the built-up area.
It's not too far off the Sagrada Nazan area also.
Right.
Almost budding it, I believe.
Yeah. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, I'm familiar with that area.
And is that something that might, as an alternative, possibly?
I believe so. What we're basically looking at then is also making sure that the agencies and other organizations that are there to provide support services for those families are able to serve them in that location, so...
How would this project be different, other than that the clientele would be limited to homeless, to the homeless families with children? Other than that criteria, how would this project be different from your other Gora housing projects?
Well, at this point, that's one of the possibilities, is to look at that in terms of marrying, to some extent, what we have under our public housing program. But our public housing program, which receives $4 million in operating subsidies from HUD, also come with certain requirements and certain screening requirements. We are, we look at police and court clearances for applicants, and so we may have a little bit more flexibility in a development that is not receiving housing assistance from HUD, which require us to screen for those kinds of activities.
Okay. All right. Senator Barnes, did you have any further comments? Okay. Mayor, did you have any closing comments that you'd like to make?
I'll work with these guys. But, you know, Senator, please take it into consideration. You know, I work closely with both agencies and Guam Housing, so, you know, like I said earlier, I don't object to the project, I just object to the location.
Okay. All right. Mr. Borja, do you have any closing comments on this one? Mr. Duñez?
Senator, this dilemma we have here is an example of an ongoing problem that I face when I deal with government agencies who ask that we build certain things for them. And that's basically is, the government of Guam has no inventory, very little inventory that is outside of the Chamorro Land Trust inventory. As a matter of fact, we are struggling to build a central police precinct, and there are, the government inventory in the central villages is very limited. And we are now looking at having to purchase property for this project. And it's also related to, again, Bill 227, is some of the constraints that we have with our grant funds. We have to be able to ensure that the use of the facility will remain eligible for a certain period of time. When the government is the owner, it has to remain eligible under the particulars, the CDBG grant in perpetuity. That is, we can change the use, but the use still has to be eligible. We can't use it for things like what we call activities of general government, that is. I can't use the funds to build myself, I'm any version of the CCU, things like that. So it has to be eligible for, in terms of ownership, if the government owns it, it has to be eligible in perpetuity. If it is owned by a nonprofit organization, we look at a reasonable period of time to recover our investments. So we're looking at anywhere from 20 to 40 years.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any further questions, so we'll consider Bill 225-33 as having been duly heard. Thank you. So, Mr. Borja, please just remain. I'm going to take a one-minute recess. Next on the agenda is Bill 226-33, and I'll ask the sponsor of the bill, Senator Tina Rose Munya-Barnes, to explain the bill.
She just wants to tell you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, 226-33 COR is an act to authorize the sale of approximately 258, more or less, square meters of a boot cart that is adjacent to Lot 240-2-4 in the municipality of Ascen to Jeffrey and Maria Victoria Gago. The boot cart runs adjacent to the three properties in the municipality of Ascen that includes the 2... the 24-2-4, Lot 242-R1, and Lot 243-R1. Because the bull cart serves no viable function, the owner of Lot 240-2-4, which are the Gaugos, will like to purchase the portion of that bull cart trail adjacent to their lot. The Gaugos will survey the land at their cost to determine the actual sizes of the lot, and this will be the basis of the two appraisals to determine the fair market value. I do know that the Department of Land Management is aware of this situation, and they are, the Gaugos, know that they are working on getting the lot surveyed and will submit their evaluations timely. The intent of this bill, Mr. Chair, is to allow or to authorize the sale of the bull cart to Jeffrey and Maria Victoria Gago. And I know that Ms. Gago is here, and Mr. Boras, who's familiar with this.
Okay. All right. Just to make it very clear, this is a bill to authorize the sale of a bull cart trail.
Mm-hmm.
Not the bull cart.
Bull cart trail.
Yeah, bull cart trail. Okay. Mr. Boras?
The Department of Land, the Department of Land Management has reviewed Mr. and Mrs., Dr. and Mrs. Gago's request to purchase the bull cart trail adjacent to their property as listed in Bill Number 226-33 in the municipality of Assen and as shown in the bill's exhibits. The department finds that the bull cart trail serves no existing purpose, is not used to access any of the properties, and its sale will not deny access to any other properties in the immediate area. Apart from any possible objections of adjacent property owners, the Department of Land Management concurs with the sale of this bull cart trail to Dr. and Mrs. Gago. In addition, the department concurs with the provisions established in this bill to, for the purchasers to provide a recorded land registration survey map of the bull cart trail, which will determine the actual size of the lot. That survey would then be used as the basis for conducting two appraisals to determine the fair market value. Thank you.
All right. Have any questions?
If I might just add, this piece of property is a very elongated, odd-looking property, and it sits on a very, very steep, comes down on a flat area of a very steep hill above it. So this bull cart trail actually rests alongside that very steep hill on the hills of Maena, going up towards Nimis Hill. And it's, so it's a, it's a very difficult path going inside there to begin with, but, you know, that bull cart trail is not served for anything else. The adjacent property just above it is vacant. It's a large tract of land. And I know the property owners have been in consultation with, with the owner of that property, and he had expressed no, no concerns about, about contesting this purchase. The Gaugos currently use part of that bull cart trail to just kind of offset the land where they're, you know, so that there's some flat activity or some flat area near the backside of their house. Like I said, this property is a very odd, a long piece of property.
So, so there's, there is an adjacent lot, other than the Gaugos, to this bull cart trail?
Correct. But those lots have their own, their own easement coming in.
I understand. But have those lot owners indicated, you said they indicated verbally that they have no interest, because I think normally what, what happens, right, if a bull cart trail is abutted by two private properties, is that, I guess, each land owner is then afforded the opportunity to either buy half of it or, or, or something like that. But, so in this case, has the other joining, or adjacent lot owner indicated, was it just verbally that they indicated they have no interest in the bull cart trail?
He's, right. And I think you can speak with the Gaugos. They've made, they did a lot of correspondence. I know the property owner was, was including me on the email discussions that they had no interest in the property.
Okay. So there's, there's something in writing--
Yes, sir.
--at least that can be used to support.
Yes.
And I don't know if that's available, but may, I would, I would like to make that available in the committee report, so that nobody comes back later and says, hey, I never got the opportunity to, to, to at least get a piece of that bull cart trail. Okay, that, okay, fine. Other than that, Senator Torres, did you have any questions? Okay. I don't have any particular questions on this. Do you have any further remarks?
None, sir.
Okay, fine. So we'll consider then Bill 226-33 as having been duly heard, and we'll move on to the next bill. The next bill is Bill 227-33, introduced by Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. And I'll go ahead and I'll turn it over to the sponsor to introduce the bill.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Bill Number 227-33 COR is an act to add a new section, 40145, to Chapter 40 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to placing Track 3621, formerly Basic Lot 381-2, municipality of Inarahan, currently leased from the Chamor Land Trust Commission under the administrative jurisdiction of the Inarahan Mayor's Office. We do know, Mr. Chair, that Inarahan is the second most populated village in southern Guam, and the village currently has no recreational sports facility to cater to the people of Inarahan. The Chamor Land Trust Commission leased Track 3621, formerly Basic Lot, Basic Lot 381-2, in the municipality of Inarahan, containing an aggregate of 5.37 acres, for the purpose of building the recreational facility. In March of 30 of 2000, the project has been stalled. Due to the lack of funding, the lease for Track 3621 will expire in six years and will prevent the construction of a long-term sports facility funded through federal sources. The intent to place track, this tract in the municipality of Inarahan under the administrative jurisdiction of Inarahan Mayor's Office is to permit, to permit the construction of a multipurpose sports facility for the people of Inarahan. The facility will be funded by the CBD, the Community Block Grant Program, or other sources of funding, as may be viable and appropriate. It is the intent of the bill to add a new section, 40145, to Chapter 40 of Title V, to transfer the tract from the inventory of Chamor Land Trust to the Inarahan Mayor for the purpose of constructing this multi-use facility. There is a revision that I would like to make on the advice from Inarahan's, from the Inarahan's MPC, the Municipal Planning Council, to change all mentions of Track 3621 to the appropriate Track 3620. Am I right, Mr. Boras? Yes, there, I don't know if you have a copy, Mr. Chair, but there was Resolution 201604, as introduced by the Municipal Planning Council of Inarahan, and I will attach that to the, to your committee, sir, if you don't have one.
I don't. I don't. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and ask, I noticed, I noticed the mayor, Mayor Flores, has signed up. And anybody else from your council if can join you up here? I think maybe Mr. Duñez, since your agency will eventually be involved in this, maybe you can join us up here also. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead, as I did in the other bill, defer to the village mayor first, and then I'll ask the, unless you prefer that, Mr. Boras, go first.
Buenas tardes, Senator, Honorable Senator Tom Arda, Honorable Senator Tina Munia Barnes, and Honorable Senator Mary Torres. For the record, my name is Doris Flores Luján, Mayor of Inarahan. We, the people of Inarahan, along with members of the Inarahan Municipal Planning Council, who are with me here today, strongly support Bill 227-33, an act relative to placing Track 3621, formerly Basic Lot 381-2, municipality of Inarahan, under the administrative jurisdiction of the Inarahan Mayor's Office. So we can develop much-needed public facilities to include a multipurpose sports facility and improve the quality of life of our residents. Current members of our MPC, along with nearly two decades of previous planning council members, have and continue to encounter fundamental Chamor Land Trust Commission land lease timeline obstacles preventing leadership from obtaining financial measures necessary to see the Inarahan multipurpose sports facility project through its fruition. The southern part of Guam has always been an integral part of Guam's growth and development, especially through its young residents engaged in sports and recreation. This facility will support all southern villages and enhance their programs as well to include educational classes, cultural workshops, and recreation and sports competitions. Ideally, this facility can also serve as a point of distribution for all southern residents following disasters or times of emergency. Sidozmasi, for allowing me to testify on this bill, and I, we humbly request that your utmost support and pass this bill into public law.
Mr. Boras?
Good morning again. I just want to paraphrase my written comments to note just some technical matters on the bill that the Senator Barnes had pointed out, that this tract of land is really correctly known as Track 3620. And so that all mention in the bill should be mentioned, should, should change the track number. Track 3620 is made up of 18 different lots, of which nine of them are currently being used for other existing facilities, such as a fire station and a senior center, a post office. So in my written testimony, I've identified the nine other specific lots within this tract that are, the tracts of land that should be the ones that are specifically released to the municipality of Inarahan for the purpose of their, their needs. And in my description, I gave you a complete information to, that you would normally need for the legal identifier, identification of each one of these nine lots. That's all I have for this.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to point out, again, as a matter of form, I was, I was aware that, I, public law, well, 2GCA, Section 2107, requires that the consideration of land bills be limited to one, one lot per bill. So I guess we would need to break up this bill into--
Right.
--all these very, but at least we've had a public hearing now. It's just that when we get on the floor, we have to treat each, each lot as a separate, as a separate bill. The questions that I have is that-- in Public Law 20218, I think this particular area that we're talking about had actually set aside a six-acre parcel. Oh, it's a six-acre parcel, but Public Law 20218 had actually reserved seven acres. Two acres to GPD for a police station, two acres to GFD for the relocation of the fire station, it's already there, and three acres to the Department of Public Health and Social Services for an elderly facility. So I guess, and then, so I guess we would have to, I'm going to need to deal with the staff and with land management and the sponsor of the bill as to how we're going to handle what was originally reserved, what this property was reserved for. Already, the fire department has moved in and taken their two acres, or whatever. And then there's the police department, a reservation that was made for them. I guess we would need for them to step forward and say, no, we don't need a police station there. And then we need to get with public health and see what they want to do with the reservation of three acres there for an elderly facility. So we have to go back to Public Law 20218 and, and maybe undo that, so that then we can, you know, so, so there's some sorting out that we're going to need to do.
Well, Senator, I believe the senior center completes the, the reservation requirement for the elderly facility.
The senior center--
Right, right. That's on this, that's on this tract of land. There's a fire station--
Right.
--and a senior center, and a post office.
Okay.
So what you would have, this is roughly, this tract of land is just roughly over four acres. And if you, and the, two of those, let me take it back, 18, 64, about four and a half acres. And if you were going to hold the remainder, the two acres for the, to be reserved for the fire department, then you would end up taking the whole tract of land, the remainder of what's left over, basically.
Yeah.
That would be eight lots. And, and so you would, I don't know what you would do with this, unless we look for a different location to, to reserve them for. I don't know if they've expressed an interest to, to locate a facility down there this time, but the mayor has expressed an interest in doing something. Now, there exists, if you look at that, that survey map, an area that steps down from the cliff that was designated for a, it says it's reserved for a, for a park area. But I don't know how, I haven't been there to, to see what kind of elements are involved to get down to the bottom of that cliff. And I don't know if it's even practical, but the, that's, there is an area that was reserved for the, for a park area.
I, I have no, I have no problems with, with the bill. I mean, at least in principle, okay, of what we're trying to do here. It's just that, I guess, we got some pieces that we're going to need to unsort and make sure that we got them in the, you know, in the right, got them tied together, because there's the reservations by Public Law 20218, there's the requirements of my law here, we got to break it out into different bills. And, and then, you know, there's even the inconsistency of Public Law 20218 identifies as six acres, but then reserves seven acres. So, so it's just a matter of, it's more of an administrative matter that we're going to need to sort out. And, and to see how we can, I mean, once we take care of that, housekeeping, we'll get it put together so that we can help the Inarahan community to achieve what it is that, that you guys are trying to achieve. Okay? All right. Senator Barnes, did you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, just thank you for giving us the opportunity to hear this bill today. As you know, the Inarahan mayor and the MPC members are also in the audience today. I just want to thank them also. But more important, that your committee has been working closely with us to see this realization. And thank you for noting that section, for the separation of the one piece. We've done it in the past. We're going to have to do it again. So, thank you, sir.
Senator Torres, did you have any questions?
I had a thought, yes. And to either of you, either one of you on the, on the panel, this, the, the idea is to construct a center. And there is a, under Section 2, there's a reversionary clause that says that if Track 3621, or should Track 3621 no longer be used for the construction of a multipurpose sports facility, it shall revert to the inventory of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. You know, in the last session that we had, there were several pieces of property that, that were reverted back to the CLTC-- that were reverted back to the CLTC inventory because they were no longer used, or it was deemed by the agencies that they had no desire to use it. In, in your opinion, do you believe that we should attach a timeline? Like, Mrs. Mayor, do you have, do you have a, a real plan to actually get something done, say, in the next 10 years or 20 years? And do you think that it's necessary, Mr. Borja, to, to attach a, a timeline to complete? Just so we know it's not holding in, in abeyance for?
Was the timeline 10 years?
There was no timeline.
There was no timeline.
No. And so my question is, do you think in your estimate for purpose of the, of the CLTC, that it's good that we have timelines?
I think the timeline was when we had the foster home, if you recall.
Right. That was a very short timeline.
And that large piece of property in Chalampagwa, I believe, in the last bill? 20 or 30 years?
20, 21.
No, actually, no, it was shorter than that. It was like five years.
Actually, the most recent example was a foster home in Baragada Heights, that if it wasn't, if action wasn't started within three years, the land goes back.
The, the intent there is that it shouldn't be used for anything else. If it's going to be used for anything, it's going to be used for this, this multipurpose sports facility, and, and not, not to be used for anything else. And if it begins to be used for anything else, then it's really void. They can't get any clearance for it.
Okay, so it's not necessarily do something or we're going to take it back. It's, it's, it's just do it only for this.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
I mean, if they want to turn it into some other kind of operation out there, then it's, you know, that's not what it was intended for.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's more, yeah, I understand now, it's more to, to hold them to the, that expressed use as opposed to any other use?
Correct.
Okay. So, Mrs. Mayor, don't worry, I'm not going to take your land away. I was just, I was just, it was unclear whether it required you to do something with it or lose it, you know, like develop it or turn it back. Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Mr. Duennias, so with the role of Gura in this, what do you envision, I mean, and if, how soon do you think, do you foresee Gura being able to, you know, provide funding for a project like this?
Well, right now, probably the next, next two cycles will be used up for the Central Police Precinct. We are trying to, to purchase property and construct on it, so we believe it may take us another two cycles before we can finish the commitment to build a Central Police Precinct. This is something that, that will probably can happen over the next five years. The, the mayor did, did submit an application last year to construct a gym. I believe we were looking at $800,000 back then. Unfortunately, the site control that she presented basically was not adequate, satisfied the requirements of being able to ensure that our investment would be protected. As I mentioned earlier, when the government of Guam owns it, it has to be an eligible activity in perpetuity when we build something. And we're basically just trying to understand the, the mechanism involved in what this bill calls for. It's not, it's preferred that the, it be land-owned and fee simple, or in this case, she has, the law or the legislation basically provides administrative control to the mayor, and that I believe should be adequate.
Mayor, has, has the council looked at the, I know that Inarahan receives, I believe, that $150,000 a year landfill host fund. Has, has the council looked at that possibly as, to leverage that annual amount that comes in, possibly for a, to obtain a loan, to be able to fund that facility that you're looking at putting on here?
We did look at that, Honorable Senator, but, you know, there are a lot of things that we need towards the improvement of the, you know, improving the quality of life of our, our residents, so some of that money, you know, we renovated, you know, like the Inarahan Basketball Court, the Malolam Multipurpose Court, improvements to the, the Inarahan Community Center, and we now have, you know, the baseball field, too. And there's just a lot of needs in the community, and we did consider that, but at this point in time, you know, we, we need, we need to focus on, on the needs of our community.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Unless anybody else has any other questions or comments, we'll deem Bill 227-33 as having been duly heard. Thank you very much for being with us today, and the committee deems this public hearing to have been completed and is now adjourned. It is now 11:15. Thank you very much.